I would like to call the regular meeting to order of the City Council of the City of Victorville. City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Grill Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. We do have a public comment open. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on public comment? Mary None. We do have a closed session and our attorney will discuss that.
Mayor Cabralis, we have closed session under item two. There are three closed session items, two A, B, and C. Item A is pending threat litigation. It relates to a contract that the city previously entered into with General Electric. We are in breach of that contract. There's the potential for litigation with GE based on that. I need to update you on the status of that. Item B is also potential threat and litigation. We are, have received previously some bids. One of the bidders in the bidding process in connection with the Fish Hatchery Road traffic signal has indicated a potential for litigation against the city based on the fact that they cannot fulfill the bid as previously set forth. The third is litigation that we may want to initiate pursuant to government code 549569C. And at this point, it would be inappropriate to name the potential parties given that it may negatively affect the litigation. To the extent there's reportable action, we will come out and report that action at the conclusion of the closed session.
Thank you. We'll go into closed session at this time. Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Grill Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District to order. First order of business is our invocation, and that will be given by Pastor Mike Chandler from Victor Valley Bible Church. And that will be followed by a pledge of allegiance by Police Chief Reynolds.
Very good, council. I'd like to also introduce my son, Stephen, almost second-class scout, Boy Scouts of America. He and I are going to be headed off to a scout meeting shortly after we're done here. But thank you very much for letting us come and be a part of tonight. "Our Father, on behalf of this council and the City of Victorville, in which I gratefully serve as minister of your gospel, I come to you. You have made the heavens and the earth by your great power an outstretched arm. Behold, nothing is too difficult for you. And indeed, before there is a word in our tongue, behold, O Lord, you know it all. You, as the scriptures attest, declare the end from the beginning in everything, and work all things after the counsel of your will." This evening, this council of city leaders is faced with a variety of important decisions affecting our beloved Victorville. Such things as bridge crossings from Apple Valley into Victorville, wastewater treatment plants, wastewater reclamation, threats from California state legislators' plans to snag redevelopment funds from local governments, state assembly bills that address local governments' bankruptcy issues, matters connected to land purchases for interchanges in the city, and so on. Though not all here are agreed on what should be done regarding these matters, I know that not one of these challenging issues has taken you off guard, nor will the decisions made this evening overrule what you are doing in this city or in the individual lives of its citizens. For you rule and overrule in all the affairs of men in order to accomplish your purpose of drawing attention to yourself to whom all the glory belongs. Nonetheless, you have urged us and invited us to pray in Jesus' name, casting all our anxieties upon you because you care for us, asking for wisdom from you who gives generously without reproach. But may those who engage in tonight's meeting be so governed by the humble response, if the Lord wills, we will do such and such. So now I pray that you guide this council, give them direction, clarity, and unity in discerning your will. Help them, Lord, to work together, to understand each other's perspectives, and to build up the city with fiscal integrity and reliance upon your strength. And I thank you that you hear us in whatever we ask when we come to you in the name of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. We did have a closed session, and we'll have that report from our city attorney.
Mayor Cabralis, we had three closed session items. They were listed on the agenda as items two, A, B, and C. And this time, there is no reportable action with respect to those items.
The next item is public comment. The comments are limited to three minutes. This council, through state law, cannot respond to any comments or issues that are brought before us because they're not included on the agenda. But if there's a discussion that rates merit, it may be set aside for supplement meetings. So with that, I will call, I have Yvette Baragan and Gilbert Scott. Yes, come to the podium, please. And you have three minutes for your comments.
I've never been to one of these before.
Could you put your mic closer?
I don't really know how it works. Our children were taken from us last year, and we think a lot of it has to do with the corruption in the CPS agency and retaliation against my fiancee, who was beat by the Atlanta Police Department four years ago and currently has a civil lawsuit against. And we think that has to do with a lot of why our kids were taken from us. And we've been doing absolutely everything that we could possibly think of to get them back, holding protest, reading the newspaper, even Spanish channels, just trying everything that we could possibly think of, ways to get my kids back. And we need help. We need help from anybody.
As I stated before, we can't respond, but certainly if someone in the audience or someone on the council can be of assistance, we understand the importance of our children.
We'd also like to state that, you know, there's been a few situations during this case. The first of this month has actually been a year that we've been fighting this situation. And we've pretty much obtained an expert doctor that is not allowed to testify in court. And, you know, we just feel that there's a lot of things in our situation and our case that really need to be looked into. You know, we would like to address to you guys that this corruption be looked into, whether it's them being audited, something, you know, something because families are being torn apart. And it's something that can't, you know, it can be, it can be fixed as far as, you know, getting yourself back together. But as far as, but as far as, like reunification, but as far as, you know, forgetting it, I think it's very traumatizing, not only to the family, but to the children and to everybody else that's going through these situations. And we'd like to present this to you guys, and thank you if, you know, you look into it.
I just wanted to say one thing. We've been looking into it a whole lot since all this has happened to our family and have been, I guess, researching a lot of it and learning a lot of the corruption in the CPS agency.
You have ten seconds left, please.
Okay, well, just learning a lot of the corruption in the agency and seeing how much our children are worth to the system. Everyday people, you know, their children's are worth a ton of money to the CPS agency. And CPS is a business, our children are the merchandise, and they have to make sure that they keep stocked up on the merchandise. A lot of people nowadays, when they adopt children, they're very picky about the type of children that they want. And you know what? See, our kids are not for sale, they're wanted, they're heaven sent. They shouldn't be taken from families that love them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other cards for public comment under article or agenda number one. So we'll go into the regular agenda of the Library Board of Trustees, and we have a consent calendar.
Move for approval?
Second.
Item number four, request to approve the renewal of the automation services agreement between the Victor City Library, Victorville City Library, and the San Bernardino County Library System in the amount of $54,528.
Move for approval?
Second.
The next two agendas are the Southern California Logistics Grill Authority and also Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Councilman Caldwell is the chair for those both authorities, and he'll do the agendas for that.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. The only item left on the bail authority is item three, which is the consent calendar.
Approval?
Second.
As to the airport authority, again, item three is a consent calendar.
Approval?
Second.
Last item, item four, is our written communications dealing with the pending approval of the promissory note between the Regional Center One LP and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority pertaining to the EB5 investor visa program in the amount of $1 million.
Next is the redevelopment, redevelopment agency, and we have consent calendar.
Approval?
Second.
Item number four, request to adopt resolution number R-10-001. It authorizes the agency to borrow money from the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund for the 1993 Victor Valley redevelopment project area in order to meet the SRA payment obligations set forth in AV264, for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year, and approving a promissory note, evidence in the same.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
From Keith?
Keith?
Metzler.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that the court, I gotta wait. I understand that the court voted on this CRA today, Keith? They approve it, or?
The court did render a conclusion as to the review of the case, and the court did validate the ERAF payment to be paid by the redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California, expecting the payments to be made by May 10th of this year.
The payments do have to be made.
The CRA, which is the Redevelopment Agency, California Redevelopment Association, our lobbying group that represents all of redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California, had actually already taken a special, conducted a special board meeting today. They have already authorized an appeal to be filed, that appeal of which is expected to be filed tomorrow morning. With that appeal, they're challenging the court's ruling, and they're also requesting an immediate stay for the remittance of the payments due May 10th. So we're hopeful at this time that, at the very least, we'll get a stay on the, on the actual payments having to be made this coming Monday.
Thank you.
Mr. Metzler, it's my understanding that the hit to the City of Victorville is about $12 million?
The overall obligation to the redevelopment agencies, 12.1, almost 12.2 million dollars, broken down in better detail, just a little bit over $3 million is due from the Bear Valley Road, Hook Road redevelopment project area. 7.1, almost 7.2 million is due from Victorville's portion of the VITA project area, and approximately 2.2 is due from property taxes or tax increment generated from Southern California Logistics Airport.
Was that the same judge that ruled in favor of the cities last time on the, when they went after these funds last time? We won that case, and this is the same judge, but he reversed his ruling and allowed him to go after, he already gave money again?
Yeah, I'm not so sure I would characterize this as reversing the ruling, but it was, in fact, the same judge that ruled last year on the grounds that the ERAF, the way it was structured in the last legislative session, that that ERAF obligation was unconstitutional. Rendered a different opinion today. Of course, the SERAF was crafted a little bit differently than the ERAF of the previous year. I haven't had a chance to really go through his opinion in detail, but the conclusion is he's changed his opinion as to the constitutionality of how the SERAF was approved this year.
But the RDA board did go ahead and appeal the ruling, right?
They voted to initiate appeal tomorrow, correct?
Okay.
When they drafted the most recent bill, they tried to address the prior court's ruling, and so they tweaked the language a little bit. CRA doesn't believe that tweak was effective. What essentially they did is they put language in to make it seem like it was a public purpose. We still believe it's unconstitutional, so the challenges will be filed tomorrow.
But we still have to ask for the money, right?
The money should, the recommendation is to pay the money unless we get a stay starting Monday.
The recommendation currently is to not cut the checks immediately and wait the time until, until May the 10th and hope that in that meantime, we get the stay. But if we don't get a stay by Friday, we're gonna have to expect to cut checks. I guess the functionality of how it'll work is with respect to what check Victorville will actually cut. Victorville will actually cut the $3 million check due from the Bear Valley Road, Hook Road project areas, and VITA is the responsible redevelopment authority to actually cut the check and recognize its ERAF obligation. VITA has been preparing for this in previous meetings. We've actually been attempting to cash flow, and VITA's pretty much agreed to actually cut that check. What effectively will happen is they will use cash on hand generated from its project area, and before distributing it to the member jurisdictions, they'll actually pay the ERAF obligation effectively. What that's gonna do is shortchange the member jurisdictions of the, of the organization, shortchange its cash flow to basically carry on its obligations. So it will filter back down to the redevelopment agencies of the jurisdictions.
Mr. Metzler, you're being very professional and very non-confrontational, but I think somebody ought to call it for what it is, and that's a raid by Sacramento on local Have absolutely no say or opportunity to be involved in the discussions that lead up to it, or where that money goes, or how it's used. And it's, in my mind, it's akin to theft.
I would concur with that. I think certainly very traumatic. Most of us are still in shock, traumatic from the perspective that with all of the economic challenges that we have in the state of California, we feel we're doing our part in terms of trying to build and promote a local economy and yet to have the main resource, the main financial resource to actually further those goals, got a dysfunctional system. I mean, to punch us in the stomach like that, take our money away, and basically impede on our ability to actually create jobs, I think, is very traumatic.
I would agree with Councilman Caldwell that it's robbery, and unfortunately, we're at the bottom of the pecking order, other than those appeals and going to court, but it's $12 million less that we have to do our projects and, and things that could be done for our citizens, so it's not good.
Current predictions are that this will actually put a lot of redevelopment agencies in California out of business. While it's gonna hurt Victorville dramatically, it'll put a lot of RDAs out of business, and that's the only economic development tool left in California right now, so.
I think just with respect to the actual action item that's before you, we have been planning for the worst. I was actually hoping to be able to stand up here tonight and ask that you remove the item, that it wasn't necessary, but we have been planning for the worst, we have been cash flowing, we have been expecting the worst-case scenario. Currently, and we're refining our numbers right now, we're expecting to be able to get through the fiscal year, the upcoming fiscal year, the 10, 11 fiscal year, but it's gonna be very, very challenging. The one uncertainty in life that I think we have, and we probably really won't have a better insight to until August later this year, is with respect to what our actual tax increment receipts are gonna be. Not sure what the assessor's office is doing with respect to project areas. We have some predictions of our own, but, you know, as we made similarly-natured predictions last fiscal year, we got surprised by Prop 8 rollback. So a lot of it's gonna hinge now, based upon our current expectations of what the numbers should look like. We will get through the fiscal year, but that's caveated with not knowing exactly what our tax increment receipts are gonna be.
Well, Washington just prints money, and Sacramento just takes it, but we've got an obligation to bondholders. Are we going to be able to meet our coverage requirements on our bonds?
Well, we've already, with respect to SCLA debt, I'll do the easy one first. With respect to Bear Valley debt, we're generally fine. We actually did a disclosure statement earlier this year, and I don't recall, unless Sophie, you can recall differently, but with respect to Bear Valley Hook debt, we were meeting coverage responsibilities. With respect to Southern California or SCLA issuances, we've already made the disclosure earlier this year that we're not meeting our mandated debt service coverage requirements. We actually notified publicly the proper entities that our coverage ratio has actually dropped to a 1.07 for the current fiscal year, which is substantially less than what it needs to be. Our coverage requirements typically, in fact, our coverage requirements for all the SCLA issues are 1.25. So we've dipped below that, but if there's been any silver lining in that regard is the fact that anything one or above is basically meaning you have adequate revenue to meet debt service obligations. 1.07 suggests we have a little bit more. That was for the current fiscal year. Again, we're concerned about the upcoming fiscal year. If the revenues come down further, it does encroach on our ability to literally just generate enough revenue to cover debt service.
Not you, Keith, but just to make one other, I'm a political junkie, and I'll tell you, if you feel kinda hopeless, then sometimes we do up here when things like this happen. The news is kind of interesting. New Jersey, which is a state not quite as big as California, and their budget, their state budget was, if I remember the number correctly, was about $40 billion. Think of that number, $40 billion. California is about $85 billion. And the new governor of New Jersey found $10 billion in savings. Now, a lot of union guys, a lot of other guys are upset and everything else, and nobody likes him all of a sudden, but he's balancing the budget in a state that was totally broke and dysfunctional, just like this state is here. And I think that's what has to happen. You have to, the folks have to get somebody in Sacramento that is willing to make some hard decisions and ruffle all of our feathers and get this thing in balance. Otherwise, we will be bankrupt in those services that they think that they can just wink at and carry on as usual. While Mr. Christie is changing the rules in New Jersey, we got an election coming up in November.
Thank you.
Maybe just to be finally clear about what you're voting on tonight, this is an interfund, effectively, an interfund loan agreement, basically taking housing monies to satisfy the ERAF obligation, which has to be paid out of your 80% funds.
Thank you. Your motion on item four?
I'll move approval of proposed resolution number R-10-001.
We have a consent calendar.
Move for approval?
Second.
Item four, request for water purchase order to Western Energy Systems for a low-voltage automatic transfer switch for the SCLA industrial wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $46,762.
Approval? Second.
Item number three is a public hearing. This is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the adoption of resolution number 10-031, entitled. Will the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, finding, determining, and declaring that the public interest, convenience, and necessity require the acquisition of portions of certain real property in the City of Victorville, APNs 309231106 and 309231107 for public use pursuant to government code section 37350.5, declaring the intention of the City of Victorville to acquire those portions of that real property by, title's missing here.
Oh.
And directing council to commence an action in the San Bernardino County Superior Court for such purpose.
Thank you. Item number three, I will now open up the public hearing on item number three. And I do have a card here for item number three. Dr. John C. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight on behalf of First Assembly of God. Let me just kind of put my thoughts into three main thoughts. One is this, that we stand in favor of the need to do this project. We understand the traffic flow and pattern here in the high desert and the need to solve that. And so the Nisqually Project is an important project. We stand as good neighbors wanting that to happen, and partner together in that. A second thought that I want to leave with you is just a little bit about us, because you may not know so much about us as, as a church, First Assembly of God. We've been in existence for 60 years now. We will celebrate our 60th anniversary this coming fall. I have had the privilege of serving as a pastor here for the last three and a half years. During that time, we have moved from about 1,000 worshippers on Sunday morning to 2,000. We have almost doubled in that period of time, and we have about 4,500 people that would consider our church their church home. We exist in a large part for the community. We are here to touch people's lives. Let me illustrate it a couple of ways. One is a food One is a food bank that we started this last year. Obviously, in the economic times that we are in, we know that there's a huge need that is out there. In the last 18 months, in the start-up phase and the continuance of this food bank, we are currently on pace to serve 75,000 meals to people in the high desert here this year. That will put us as the second-largest food bank in the high desert, not just in Victorville, in the high desert. You may be familiar with Victor Valley Christian School. We are now currently the largest Christian school in the high desert. Christian school directly affiliated with, as a ministry, First Assembly of God Church. Preschool through 12th grade, we have had 15,000 students connected with our school over its nearly 40-year history. Graduates that come out of our school go to places like Cal Berkeley, UCLA, Cal State System, UC System. This year, one of our graduates is going to Cornell University, Ivy League. Great to have that connection point. We are becoming, for me to proclaim, but we are becoming probably one of the premier academic institutions in the high desert. Think of another example, a guy by the name of Sal, who attends our church in our men's ministry. He was directly tied to gangs here in the high desert a couple of years ago. He came to us, we're in the process of helping him rehabilitate, getting out of the gangs, getting connected. He and his wife now attend the church, family attends the church. We've got a couple of people that we're working with specifically in that venue. The reason I say that is this, is that as a church, we are here to really touch this community, whether it's raising up another generation of students, whether it's rehabilitating people that have been in gangs, whether it's touching people who have come through tough economic times. We want to stand with people. And really, if I can say it this way, we are one of your churches. Just say it that way. We exist to touch people's lives, which leads us then to the third point, and that is this, that as we walk down this road of needing to widen Nisqually and put this interchange in, obviously, this project is going to hugely and directly impact our property. The access or lack of access that is being granted to us on the new Mariposa is going to hinder us greatly. The lack of access, ingress egress, that we will have on Nisqually because of its widening project will impact us greatly. We will be losing, as you know, parking spaces. Traffic patterns, particularly in the western part of our parking lot, will be directly impacted because of the flow of what will be taking place there. And so I know as elected officials, you want to see the big picture take place. I understand that, and so do we. Our concern is that there have been a number of things we've brought to the table for consideration in this project, and they are not being met. And so we need to, unfortunately, bring before you the need that is there. We don't want to stand in an adversarial relationship as we move forward. We want to partner together. That's my goal, that's our church's goal, and I believe that's your goal as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pastor, before you leave, you probably know how this process works. This is the first reading, and this will be back before us at a subsequent meeting, probably the next meeting in two weeks. Would it be too much of a burden to ask you to provide to the council just a summary of the points that you have apparently shared with our staff, that you help, that you think would help at least mitigate some of the ingress egress problems you've just described?
Is that something you're asking me to do right now, or is that something that would like to provide to you?
Something between now and the next meeting, which would be two weeks hence, although I think, you know, the sooner we could get our hands on it, the better, but...
That would be great. I see no reason why we can't help provide that kind of information to you.
If I may, Councilmember Caldwell, this is not a two-step process. This is a, just the adoption of a resolution of necessity tonight in a public hearing. It does not come back necessarily before the council unless you so desire. The concern that we would have is one of timing. As you know, we've had this on the agenda previously, and because of a lack of a quorum, have not been able to proceed. But the adoption of this resolution does not preclude us from continuing to discuss options and mitigation measures with church representatives. A lot of that discussion has been occurring. We have been in correspondence with the church's attorneys, and they have made clear some of their concerns. I think primarily disruption of the education, the classrooms during the temporary construction is a major concern, as well as the access. The city engineer's office has been working with them, along with the acquisition agents, to try and resolve those issues. I think we are making some progress. There has been some discussion about construction of sound walls, doing the construction after hours in the evening. My understanding is the construction's only going to take approximately six months, or sorry, six weeks. And so the staff is working very diligently to try and mitigate all of those issues with respect to some of the easement and access issues. I know the church was looking for, I think it was a left-hand turn on Nisqually, and the city engineer's opinion, that unfortunately leads to some dangerous traffic conditions. So we're looking at other alternatives. Again, obviously, you have the choice of continuing this item. I would just urge that, this is a Caltrans-funded project, there's a lot of other funding agencies, and we are already somewhat behind the eight ball in terms of timing. Nothing, if you so choose to adopt the resolution of necessity tonight, it would not preclude ongoing discussions. Obviously, the church still obviously has a lot of options with respect to how they want to proceed as well, but...
Well, that's all well and good, Mr. D. Bortnowsky, but the staff has elected to elevate this now to a public hearing, and it's now in the hands, at least in part, of the council. And I, for one, want to see the list of concerns, and I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Now, if we don't have to have a second meeting, that's fine, another item we don't have to worry about. But I would like the council to have access to the church's concerns and their recommendations. Now, whether we'll accept them or agree with them remains to be seen. But this has been a difficult issue for the church, and we're all aware of that. And I am not going to take a position to endanger the project, but by the same token, I am going to ask that we all receive this information so we know what we're talking about, and it's not in a void or in an abstract. So the pastor's indicated that he can provide that, and I thank him and the church for that, and we'll see where it goes. Nothing wrong with us talking about it again at the next meeting, two weeks hence. I think we should.
Should I direct those directly to you, council member, or should I direct them to the mayor and give copies to all of them?
Could go to the mayor.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have a question for our attorney. Does that mean we have to take this and take it up at our next meeting then, or can we vote on this and look at those?
It's entirely the choice of the council. Right now, you have opened the public hearing. Your options would be to continue the public hearing for two weeks to allow for additional testimony. You could close the public hearing under the understanding that you're going to not act on this item until you receive the additional information. You could act on the item with the understanding that you'll receive the information and consider it at that time. So it's really up to the discretion of the city council how you want to perceive it. Those essentially would be your options.
You know, this is very time-sensitive, and I'd like to hear from Sean on the sensitivity of time, because, you know, like, there's funding, there's other things involved here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in fact, there is a certain time crunch. There's a portion of the project that would be funded from federal dollars. The obligation of those funds needs to occur by September at the very, very latest, otherwise we risk losing those funds. Before we can obligate the funds, we need to certify right-of-way, and one of the several parcels left is this one, that we need to have an order of immediate possession at the very least to be able to certify right-of-way. And we wait two weeks? Probably. I'm not so sure that this one is necessarily on the critical path. There's a few others. But beyond that, we're going to be in serious trouble in not getting the right-of-way certification in time.
Questions, Sean?
Let's say they had a list of issues that we could deal with. The footprint of the interchange itself and everything, that can't change at all. That's immutable, right, in terms of the design features and that sort of thing?
That's correct, Councilman Rothschild. We've been through many, many years of various iterations of the interchange footprint. To change it at this time would cause years of delay. I can't estimate how many, but we would need to take steps backward to the extent that you almost begin the environmental process all over again.
Well, I mean, I see this very similar to the bridge over the river business that we're about to engage in a little bit too, and the same idea is that there's a consensus of support for our project, but some of the details are still in dispute. And here, we've got a footprint that can't change. Now, we may be able to redo some things in the city to help, whether it's to deal with the parking or mitigating noise or some of the other features, but it can't change the fundamental design of the interchange, can it?
I don't see how it can at this stage. I mean, there is a duty to do reasonable, make reasonable efforts to mitigate impacts due to, you know, whatever project you're dealing with. And I feel we've done that. We've been through an environmental process. The issues being brought up at this stage, unless they're new issues, they're issues that we have already discussed and talked about. You know, if there was a question of getting a drive approach from the church onto the new Mariposa Road, we were open to that, but when we analyzed it from the civil engineering aspect, it would have encroached so far into the site that they would have lost another 15 parking spaces. So it's one of those things that we didn't feel that we had to compensate for the loss of 15 more. We thought we were trying to be as reasonable and accommodating as possible by looking into it, and if it had panned out, then it would have been something that we could have lived with. But it's more a physical, practical item rather than having to change the design of an interchange.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we change the design of the interchange, and I'm not suggesting that we delay the project. What I am suggesting is we are encumbered by a system, part of which is our own making. And these folks have not had an opportunity to address the elected officials who have to make the ultimate decision. And I think we can accommodate a reasonable dialogue without wreaking havoc on the Nisqually interchange. I think we can adopt the resolution tonight, and we can revisit this issue in one fashion or another, but I think that the church, like any other member of the community, has a right to share their concerns with the elected officials, and we have an obligation to listen. We may decide that what they tell us is nuts. We may decide that some or all of what they tell us makes good sense, but that dialogue has not occurred, and I think it has to occur.
Well, you know, I agree we need to move forward with this, and if there's a list of concerns, we can look at those concerns, but they're not going to change the design. And so this thing needs to move forward. Some of those concerns have to do with the construction or some other things like that, and those can be mitigated, and we can look at those and, you know, discuss this with staff, but I'm prepared to adopt or vote to adopt this resolution tonight.
There was mention of...
And allow us to review the concerns.
Yeah, there was mention of dust and noise issues, and we are sensitive to that. That is something that can be mitigated during construction, and we've already prepared and sent to the First Assembly's attorney a list of the proposed mitigation measures that would be introduced into the specifications. That would require night grading, night construction of the retaining wall and sound wall along Mariposa Road. We don't have a problem with that.
Questions, Sean?
No, I think we need to move forward on this with the direction to staff to continue to try to work through these issues with the church. It was my understanding that city clerk provided us with, the whole council, with a letter from their attorney outlining these issues. I've read it. It does discuss some of the same issues we've talked about tonight. I think our staff is doing everything they possibly can to address those issues. It's probably impossible that either side will be completely happy with whatever ultimately is the outcome, but I would encourage staff and our attorneys to continue to work with the church and their attorneys to address these issues. But we need to move forward on this. This interchange has been too long in the making. It needs to move forward this year. It needs to go to construction this year, and we need to certify the right-of-way, so it needs to happen.
I agree, but I think we really should work with the church and see if we can't get all their concerns addressed.
Thank you, Sean. The public hearing is so open, is there anyone else wishing to address the council, either for or against item number three? Hearing now, now we'll close to public hearing and call for the vote.
Second.
Item number four is another public hearing, and this is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving the draft fiscal year 2010-2011 annual action plan. And I would like someone from the Economic Development Department to just kind of brief us a little bit on what we're doing here.
If you would remind Keith to...
This is on your action plan? Emma, okay.
I'm Tamara Torres, the redevelopment housing manager, and this is basically bringing to you the second public hearing of an action plan and what we're proposing to do for the fiscal year 10-11. There was a couple of changes done as a result of our actual allocation that we received from the federal government. There was an increase on CDBG funds, community development block grant funds, and there was a decrease on home funds. So those adjustments were done, and they are summarized for you in the list of proposed The total allocation estimated for the upcoming year, including all funds, will be $1,931,315. Have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Tam.
I'm making motion to approve. Oh, that's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
Yes. Anyone we should speak for or against item number four? Hearing now, now we'll close the public hearing on item number four and call for the vote.
Second.
Item number five is a consent calendar. Item number five is a consent calendar.
With Councilmembers Almond and Caldwell. Thank you.
Item number six, request to approve a joint exercise of powers agreement. Mr. Cox?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council, this item was put on the council agenda before and would continue to see if there's further discussion necessary. The actual official action of the Victorville Wastewater Authority, the board of directors, actually directed that the JPA and the sludge agreement go to each member entity to be voted on and then to be submitted back to the board. It was the intent to do so, and the, what was missing in the agreement was the map that would show each member entity's A and B, and you have Exhibit A on the dais in front of you, which is the boundary of the Victorville Wastewater Authority. Exhibit B then shows the A and B portions of each member entity. The A portion has a continued flow that will continue to be discharging to the Victorville Wastewater Authority and pay for the services, and the area identified as B would be those areas that could be diverted. We believe that the diversion issue was answered, and, and from the opinion of our staff, we thought it was a closed issue and ready to be adopted. A consultant report came out and addressed the diversion issue again, which the managers' group had put to bed. I guess that caused other entities to question it again. If the matter's settled, there's nothing to question. It's over and handled as far as we're concerned. Needs to be adopted, and we need to move on.
Question?
I have some. And I guess I'd like to direct my question jointly to items six and seven.
Okay.
And it may be more of a question that'll have to be answered by either Reggie Lamson or Andre, but my first question is, is there anything in the language, especially of six, that impacts in any way on Victorville's current contract rights to the discharge fluent from VVWR?
The, the agreement that City Victorville currently has with the VVWR that provides for the reclaimed water issue was specifically addressed by our engineering staff and legal staff. Andre's firm handled that very, very carefully. There was a tremendous amount of input, and a lot of modifications were made to the new proposed JPA to ensure that that agreement was protected and included in the new JPA, so it is not at risk. But Andre Dubortnowski, council, may want to answer that legally rather than administratively.
In addition, we had those exact same concerns, so we deemed it necessary to also, in addition to the approval of the amendment to the joint exercise of powers agreement, to terminate the prior services agreement and then amend the reclaimed water agreement that we have with VVWR that makes it clear that it survives regardless of these other actions. So we are protected with respect to our agreement to be able to receive the reclaimed water from VVWR.
The second question I have is that we have talked many times at this dais about whether or not there would be the sludge agreement, whether or not we could get a sludge agreement and a decision to move forward on the basis that we would not get a sludge agreement. What, what is the status of the sludge agreement issue now that we've got these two issues pending before the member entities?
We believe that the sludge agreement is needed for future and as precaution, as possible insurance. I spoke with Mr. Loganos approximately one week ago, indicating that the city engineer had come to me and the deadline had arrived to start constructing the ponds in order for us to be able to handle and dispose of sludge from the plant, that that is a multimillion-dollar item. And I simply pointed out that we were kind of giving notice in case they had any further ideas. I didn't want to rehash the year and a half of discussion that we've had regarding the JPA and the sludge agreement, but the fact is, is that we're, our, your representative on the VVWR, current mayor Rudy Carielis, had indicated there is a deadline approach, and once that approaches, we make the decision, there is no turning back because we have to issue contracts, and that deadline is here. We've, we've kind of built around the system and avoided it, tried to get the sludge agreement, and we do in fact have cooperation from VVWR in that Coca-Cola's operating, and we have a temporary agreement that they are handling the waste from that plant and doing so without any problems. From that conversation that we had, there was a meeting between our engineer and Mr. Loganos, and the suggestion was, is that rather than make that almost $3 million investment, I don't remember the exact figure, that they would temporarily enter into an agreement to take the sludge to allow time to figure out if they're going to approve the sludge agreement, which means that we would not have to build the sludge plant. But it would delay us having to make the investment, but it would provide that all items be looked at. And all items, as you know, the Atalanta plant is discharging to the Victorville Wastewater Plant. That line comes parallelo, it goes beside our land, our treatment plant, and we could discharge into that line. There's a lot of options that we have. There was a concern about diversion, but any amount that we might divert is being made up by the flow from the Atalanta plant, which means there would not be a reduction in flow. We just felt that all the items had been addressed, and Logan studied the matter, sent a memorandum to Victorville Wastewater Authority. They had a special meeting yesterday morning, and as a result, the board directed him to draft an agreement to take the sludge from this plant for a period of 10 months, I believe.
One year.
One year. And therefore, we have a year to determine, is this going to work sufficiently, or do we go ahead and build the plant? But it's a, it's a, it's a year delay for us being required to, well, maybe not a year like, year delay, we're going to know before then, but it, we don't have to go ahead and make that almost $3 million investment at the present time. And the plant is equipped to treat the sludge and take the sludge. They're apparently going to do so, and we expect that agreement to move forward fairly quickly because we are on a deadline. It's a, you know, any delay could have some consequences that would be detrimental to the city, so they're going to move very quickly on that. And it did receive a 4-0 vote from the Victorville Wastewater Authority to move forward with that agreement.
The new JPA, was that drafted by VVWR's legal counsel?
I'm sorry, the what?
The new JPA, was that document drafted by VVWR's legal counsel?
The new JPA was by committee. Sean, Sean submitted a tremendous amount of information. It went to the attorneys, it went to the managers' group, it went to the technical advisory committee, it went back and forth, and continual changes were made through the whole agreement. I think the product, the work product, as it progressed through, was handled by Sean, who finally, who would then submit it back to the managers' group, further negotiations and questions. And so there was two things. Number one, to be as accommodating as possible, that would not be harmful to the other member entities, and number two, well, strike that. Number one, protect the interest of the city, and number two, to make sure that it wasn't harmful or detrimental to the other entities. We believe we accomplished all of that, and thanks to Sean for all the hard work and the continual rewrites, all of that information was submitted, and we do believe that there's nothing holding this up other than the Hisparia Apple Valley County taking an action to vote on it. Why, why they're not, we have no idea, but there's no further negotiations that we see. There's no need for any other meeting, need for any modifications of the document that we see.
It'll be noted that it's been a year and a half?
Yeah, as far as the sludge agreement, we first submitted that in November of '08, but the modifications to the JPA had been worked on years before that. So in answer to Councilman Caldwell, I could not tell you who owns the document. It's been touched by too many people along the way, but finally, there was a version that we were happy with, and we seemed to get the buy-in from the other strategic advisory committee members. At that point, we circulated it in March or April, and then we were asked for a 30-day continuance from Apple Valley, so back before you.
Well, I do want to say, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, well, I do want to appreciate, thank you to Sean and appreciate all the work he did. It's not a Victorville document. It's not his document. The input and the changes were made by all the member entities, and over months of discussion and many, many, many meetings, and a lot of discussion each time an issue was raised or a concern was raised, and it was studied by everyone involved. There was input, input, suggestions, free flow. We believe that all the concerns expressed have been accommodated. Everyone had an input. Got there, Sean?
Yeah. Your question, but setting aside the $3 million setup capital, how long would it take to transition into a standalone sludge operation of our own? What's the timeframe on that? It's come down to a point at the end of this year. I don't want us to get into a point where we can't transition out and be on our own if we can't, if we, if that's what we want, if it's not working out. How much time do you need to do that?
If I may, Mr. Cox, the discussion I had after the meeting, just briefly with Loganos, was that the agreement would have a nine-month term with 180 days to do exactly what you were talking about, Councilman Rothschild, that we would then start to implement the standalone plan. So we would have-
You're saying we have half a year?
In total, we would have 15 months. There would be an initial nine months and then another six months to implement the standalone plan and treat our own sludge.
Okay, so two years down, oops, two years down the road, we decide we want to go standalone.
No, that, it would be nine months.
I, no, 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 I'm saying, everything's going great. We love it, and we're doing it, and we get past all these deadlines, these little artificial deadlines, and we're two years into the program and things aren't working out, which I'm a very suspicious person, and I have a feeling that things might not start, be working out two years from now, for today, they're just great.
You're talking about the permanent sludge? I mean, the, the decision point is going to be whether we build our own or we go with this agreement. If we go with this agreement, we're going to have to spend $550,000 on a connection fee, and then we're going to have to pay about $300,000, $400,000 to install a sludge line from our plant down to theirs. So we'll be committing capital money into that. If we say it's not going to work out, I mean, there's nothing to preclude us from building our own standalone, but we're going to be throwing money away into, you know, by going with the agreement initially and then backing out. The interim agreement allows us the time to get to that decision point, and that was the nine months I was referring to.
Okay, now, have we, and you've indicated in the past that the sludge has value to it. In other words, this is a money-making thing for VV, which is fine, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but is that income proportionally distributed back to the members, or how does that work in terms of-
Yes, in a sense it is. What they have done is they've calculated that in value into the cost of treatment. So once they, once they have a way of capturing the energy from the digestion of the sludge, then they apply a credit to our fee, but all of the members benefit from the energy.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Call for the vote.
We're calling for number six of both.
For number six, two votes.
Number six.
Four on six, yeah.
Move for approval.
The motion is contingent on approval of the other agencies. Is that correct, Sean? Tied to approval by all other entities as well. The motion can be modified to be contingent on everybody else's approval.
Yes, I will modify it that way. I think the JPA actually requires that, does it not?
It does require it, correct.
Item seven, request to approve the sludge management contract.
No for approval?
Second.
Number eight, it's a request to, request for direction from council regarding bringing the city council a cooperative agreement with the town of Apple Valley and the county for the final design of the Green Tree Boulevard Bridge and Road Extension, Yeh Road, Whiting, and Yoculoma. Road and bridge utilizing a $1 million federal CMAC grant available through Sandbag.
Babe, if you'd cover this matter, please. Pass this on to the individual that's found magic.
It's going to get overtime.
I know. This item is back before you again. The, the issue that driving it is approximately $1 million of CMAC funds that Sandbag is wanting to see some level of cooperative agreement at least approved, so that they feel comfortable obligating those funds for the Green Tree-Yoculoma alignment design west of the railroad tracks. The, if we are not able to get into a cooperative agreement, then the risk is that Sandbag will redirect those funds to another project. What they don't want to do is to leave those monies unspent, so that by the end of the federal fiscal year, it makes them look bad. They, the way it works is that if they expend all of the monies that are allocated to the district, they can then go and look in other districts where there is money unspent and try and get it obligated to a project within Sandbag's district. So there's a motivation for us to approve an addendum to the existing cooperative agreement to include the design work, and then Sandbag will feel comfortable and we will get to hold on to the funds. At this point in time, staff is seeking direction still, but in anticipation, there is a draft agreement that has been, it was actually only submitted to us today by the county staff to include this design portion, and we haven't had a chance to review it, but at your direction, we will bring that back at the next meeting. We obviously need to have legal counsel review it, and we need time to review it as well. So if that's the council's pleasure, that's what we will do.
I'll move for approval, but you bring it back.
I would like some opportunity to discuss this. I'm prepared to support it, but it's with the caveat that we had the joint meeting with the town of Apple Valley, and I asked the question very specifically. I want to ask it again for the record. As our city engineer, are you satisfied that in taking this action, it does not commit the city to extending Green Tree Boulevard west from Hisparia Road?
I'm not sure I understand the question. At Hisparia, Green Tree Boulevard exists west of-
I'm talking about as a, as a part of this recently labeled corridor. We've talked, we've had discussions, you know, ad nauseam about alternate alignments, which may or may not work. What I'm concerned about is that we not be locked into a commitment to- What I'm concerned about is that we not be locked into a commitment to basically accept crossing of the river and the railroad as a commitment to move all of that traffic westerly to the Seventh Street Mariposa Palm Dale interchange. That if we choose to route it otherwise, that we would still have that option. And I asked that question and I understand, if I, if I misunderstood, you tell me now. But I asked that question and the conclusion that was reached by you and your counterpart in Apple Valley, as I understood it, was we were not committed.
Yeah, the, I, I'm sorry I misunderstood the question, but the, um, the, the traffic coming west from Apple Valley to Hesperia Road can be prohibited for, from making the through movement by medians, by geometric design, by signage and striping, and we could just simply prohibit a through movement of that. So as you would come westbound to Hesperia Road, we can go, you can turn right or left, but not go straight through. And that would discourage traffic from using Green Tree west of Hesperia Road as a corridor.
Well, the language in your staff write-up is, I think, rather specific in the language that I like. And that says that this agenda item deals with extending Green Tree Boulevard, in essence, easterly to connect to the crossing of the bridge. And I just want to make sure that it's on the table and that everybody understands that there are decisions to be made in the future as to whether Green Tree becomes the primary arterial or, or not. And you've answered that to my satisfaction. And then I asked that same question that night of our city attorney, so I'm gonna ask it again for the record.
This, this action is a little different than the one previously. The previous one was the approval of the environmental document. The environmental document basically did not commit you to any specific alignment and it basically was just to facilitate the study of that alignment. This is just an extension of that, as I understand it. It's to finish the engineering study of that portion. However, it does not commit you to that alignment.
This would be the design for it and, you know, if you say commit, if we change our minds later on, which we could do, but we risk having to pay back the federal dollars that we used to implement environmental and design work on, on this alignment.
But we do have an out.
Right.
Well, this, I just would like to remind the council that this is giving staff direction here. Agreement would be brought back with council's approval. This is not the approval at this time. It's giving staff authorization and as Sean indicated, the county has prepared a document we received, we have instituted. That must be brought back to the city council for the city council to, to approve.
Well, I, I'm, my questions and concerns have been answered satisfactorily and I, I'm prepared to support it. I just wanted it on the record so that it's clear, at least where my vote is coming from.
I, again, I, this is the tail wagging the dog. We've got 20,000 cars potentially coming into the Green Tree with the caveat that Mr. Caldwell has brought out on the floor here. That's probably the best solution to completing the project and I am in favor of completing the project. I am not in favor of the design that is fundamentally on the table right now and so I'm not gonna support this. Cause I, I don't, I believe that we can change it in the future. Right now, we're, we're voting on a straight shot into Green Tree and so I'm not gonna support that. But I have another big issue and it's an issue that this council could have taken. I've asked for it several times and they still haven't. And that is, who owns the bridge over the, over the railroad tracks? That's anywhere from a 10, 15, 20 million dollar bridge, depending on what the design features are. And that ought to be stated by this council. It either belongs to Apple Valley or the county. I'm, I don't care which one. It's in the county, but ostensibly the project is Apple Valley's project. So that bridge over the railroad tracks is the other part of my big concern and both of those comes hand in hand. If, I'm gonna vote against it, but the fact is, if we proceed ahead and then you redesign that intersection and that eliminates a major concern I have, but only one of the two. The other one being, who pays for the bridge over the railroad tracks? And in my opinion, it should not be the city of Victorville. We have no benefit from that bridge coming over that railroad tracks, none whatsoever. So I'm opposed to the motion as it is on the table because very clearly it, it brings that project, design feature-wise, right into Green Tree and doesn't mitigate the problems. As you said, we could get into that at a later date. So I'm not prepared to support this motion, but my concerns are on the table and my no vote will be there.
Wait a second.
Mayor Carrapello, I believe you have two speaker request cards.
Correction, yeah, thank you. Okay, Sean, thank you. Before I bring the speakers...
You've got a motion in a second already on the table. We've got two people speaking.
We've got, yes, before, we haven't closed it yet.
Why don't you withdraw your motions or you don't need them?
I didn't know there was anybody speaking.
And that's my fault, thank you. But I would also like to, before I bring the speakers up, this is one of those projects that's been around for a long time. We were talking just not too long ago about Nisqually, the overpass, and it's been designed that way. I've, I, I've gone out there and I've looked at it and I think that the way it's designed is the least intrusive and, and not looking at it, I'm just looking at it as like a private citizen. And when you get to Hesperia Road, well, Sean mentioned, there's mitigation measures, I think, that could be in place. So I'm prepared to vote, vote for that, just as it's presented to us. But I do have two speakers. The Matt Correll, Carol?
I'm gonna keep my comments very short and brief, but speaking as a citizen of Victorville, I do think the citizens of this city will stand to greatly benefit by this bridge project as it is currently designed. It's unfair to look at this just in terms of regards of traffic on Green Tree Boulevard. We have a huge traffic problem that this will alleviate on Bear Valley Road. The citizens of this city are more aggravated by the traffic on Bear Valley Road than that of Green Tree Boulevard. So a lot of us would be in favor of getting this done and a yes vote would be in our best interests at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a Richard and Linda Crook?
I live at 13685 Code Road and if the bridge goes over where it was originally supposed to go, two council members, unfortunately old and I don't remember their names, that wanted to vote to move the bridge a little bit north. That way it won't take my property and the property next to us and down the road, cause we're, we're all three retirees. We're retired and, you know, be better, there's no houses to the north. Just move the bridge a little north. Road.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we do have item number eight and H.R. motion.
Motion is just to request that staff bring back for council's consideration the amendment to the existing agreement, I, I would presume from the county of San Bernardino for design.
Second.
I second.
Item number nine, a request to approve funding in the amount of $43,780.05 for improvements to Ford Vexer to meet the emission standards.
Approval?
Thanks.
Which one are we on, nine or 10? 10. Uh, request approval of funding in the amount of $58,696.20 for the installation of diesel particulate filters on four vehicles to meet California standard compliance of emission requirements.
Move for approval?
Second.
Just to make a comment on these last two items here. I sit on the air quality board and yes, I, you see my yes vote reluctantly, by the way, because it's state law and I don't even know why we have to vote on it if it's state law. But the fact is that these kind of standards are totally ridiculous. They do absolutely nothing for like your quality of life or anything else, but they're the regulatory things that come out of the Sacramento and the regulatory agencies in this state that affect all of us. This just happens to affect the city of Victorville. There are these same type of rules affect, I think, Joanne's business, all the way up to the big businesses in this state here. It is incredible, uh, the amount of money that is wasted and with no discernible value to the quality of life that you're living here. There's no studies out there that you're gonna live one minute longer because of these rules and yet we're spending this kind of money and nobody in Sacramento even pays half attention to this stuff. Year after year, we keep doing these kind of things. Makes a difference where you put in Sacramento, folks, but I voted, but yes, because we had to, not because I, I wanted to. Rudy's not here. Uh, number 11, is a request to rescind the award of contract to the C. Morales Incorporated in the amount of $255,000 for the construction of a traffic signal at Fish Hatchery and Bear Valley Roads. It's a correction to an, uh, faulty bid. I move approval?
Second.
On number 12, coming up.
Number 12, it's a request to award a contract to Sierra Pacific in the amount of $260,000, $260,159.65 for the traffic signal at Fish Hatchery and Bear Valley Roads.
No for approval?
Second.
Item 13, request to adopt resolution number 10-033 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, ordering the vacation or abandonment of portions of the relinquish of dedicated direct vehicular access rights at the southeast corner of Seventh Avenue and Silica Drive."
Move for approval?
Second.
Item 14, it's a request to adopt resolution number 10-035. Ryan, did you bring this through?
Yeah, this is a proposition that deals with the industry that I am involved in, but affects all Californians. If you choose to move your coverage to a different insurance company, you can't take that discount that you would normally get with your existing insurance company with you. This is a, a regulation that does not make any sense and it basically corrects that and removes that regulation and allows people throughout the state of California, whenever they choose to move their insurance to a different company, to take that continuous coverage discount with them. And basically will, will help increase competition in the industry and I think ultimately reduce rates to Californians. So that's why I've asked the council to support it.
Move approval?
Second.
Item 15, again, Ryan, that's sure.
Yeah, Assemblymember Mendoza's been pushing this bill for the last two years, it's my understanding, but it's regarding municipal bankruptcy. And although that, that word's been mentioned with respect to the city of Victorville, I would like to take this opportunity to make sure that everybody's assured that that's not going to happen here in the city of Victorville. I must credit our city manager and, and staff with working diligently to make sure that that does not occur. But I think it's in the interest of supporting the rest of the cities throughout the state of California that we send this letter, not only to Assemblymember Mendoza, but also to the governor to make sure that it doesn't get to his desk and he actually signs it. So that's why I'm asking that we support that.
Item 16, a presentation or report from council members. I was right.
Just a quick comment on, on the judge's decision with respect to the redevelopment agency today. I think I've made this comment to a few people today, but apparently we need to go back to the days of Thomas Jefferson and get rid of two-thirds of our judges in this judicial system. Where, where these decisions come from and why they make them just absolutely makes no sense and ultimately affects the citizens of Victorville, the citizens of the United States. Judges don't live in the real world, uh, much like my industry where underwriters don't live in the real world. I just don't understand the decisions that are being made and unfortunately, I, I don't think our current administration will be removing judges, but if, if I had anything to do with it, I think they should be removed, so just my comments.
Okay. Eric or Mike, let's go with Mike.
Yeah, the consequences of us now voting for those two air quality, we wouldn't get to use those expensive pieces of equipment after January 1st. That's how the state would take it. And not only that, we couldn't even sell it. So unless it was fixed, so, um, anyway, that's the consequences of them just taking that more expensive property, a couple hundred thousand dollars pieces of equipment out of play if you don't put the $40,000 of fixes on there that you don't need anyway.
Well, I'd like to agree with Councilman McCracken, but I think we should broaden the scope of the removal to get rid of large percentage of the state legislators and members of the House and the members of the Senate in Washington, because judges are at the tail end of the stream. It all flows from stupid decisions like the one we had to deal with, which is a legislative decision signed by the governor. So I agree with you, but I'd like to take it a little...
Broaden it? Amen. I second that.
And I agree with that, Terry. It's, uh, it's the people that caused the problem that should be removed. And, you know, of course, the judges are downstream, but it starts at the top there, so, yeah.
I have one other item, Mr. Mayor. I'm aware that there is a 30-day period running, it started today, for the comment on the expansion of the landfill here in Victorville. And most of you know I'm very, very concerned about that and, and very much opposed to it. So I, I would like to have our staff, both our city engineer and the folks involved with solid waste management, come back at the next council meeting with a full report of what's going on and why and whether or not the city of Victorville should take a position on this. I have the flyer on it and I'll leave it with the city clerk. It gives you all the contact information and the email and all the rest of it, but basically the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is, is taking comments for the next month on the expansion of the Victorville sanitary landfill.
Thank you. I would like to, first of all, thank the, the police, our fire department, public works, our city staff, all those who helped the Hispanic Chamber with, with the Cinco de Mayo. We had an outstanding attendance and, and I think there might have been about 15,000 people there throughout the day. It was one of the biggest events we've had. And we can't hold those unless we have the, the support of the city. The city is the partner for the chamber, so we, we appreciate that. appreciate that. We, we appreciate the, the guys around the ground there for us. So thank you very much.
And with that, will it turn to me?